So as a preliminary matter, this is Larry Murphy, Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Pecos?
Yes.
George Morris?
Yes.
Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Woody Knight?
Yes.
And Mary Stone?
Yes.
And the town staff, Martha Taylor?
Yes.
And we don't have any anticipated speakers of presenters tonight. This is November 2nd, 2022, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board and is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which extends the Governor's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, generalized Chapter 30A, Section 20, until March 31st, 2023. This order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location and allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering Meeting ID number 83271413056, or by calling 1-929-2056099, New York, and entering the Meeting ID number one prompted. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video and/or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at www.tncTV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Let me go over some ground rules before we turn to the first item on the agenda. I'd like to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members, inviting each member by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called further. For all attendees, except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer using your mute button or your phone *6 to toggle mute/unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds or earphones with tablets and cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything after you brought, anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through me taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. For public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will look for the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function for video conference participants. To raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more function next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in a Zoom meeting, hit *9 on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click on the raise hand function. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, participant, or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of those in the raised hand column and again, afford the participant, applicant, or representative an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record and again, the participants, applicant, or representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not yet been addressed. And finally, each vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. So having said that, why don't, the first item on the agenda is the liaison reports. And Leslie, Select Board?
Yes, the Select Board. Thank you, Larry. It started off with public comments. Bill DeMayo got up and said the CB, the COA is going to have a veterans lunch on 11/9 and on 10/20, it was going to be 10/27, the breakfast with the chiefs. So that's already gone by. Donations were accepted. There was a Mass Trails grant for the Newbury Parker Street Trail Connection. It had gone out for a grant on bid and that we got $125,000 for construction on that trail. The Fire Department Grant also was approved for just about, you know, 120. It was approved for everything so that, you know, the firefighters, their gear, a lot of the stuff will be covered by this grant. There was a public hearing for Marsh Meadow Lane, what was, which was continued till their next acceptable meeting because usually it would have been on next Tuesday, but that's election day and they can't have a public hearing. So they're going to have it on Monday instead at 7:00. And some one-day liquor licenses and congratulations to Patty Fisher. She was recommended by Chief Lucy to become the next chief of police here in Newbury. And I think she is highly qualified and I think a lot of people feel the same way. Dana Packer made a quick presentation on meeting updates as far as looking into increasing the benefits of veterans on their property tax. So it would double. So if you pay for, if you, if you got a discount of $400, now it'll be $800 and that's going to go through. I didn't jot down town administrator reports, but so that's all I have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Leslie.
You're welcome.
So next, the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's me. They met on October 20th. They approved the special permit and finding to raise an existing non-conforming two-family dwelling and reconstruct a new two-family dwelling with an increase in footprint and height at 1710, 1710th Street, Plum Island. They continued to the next, their next meeting on November 17th, the request for special permit finding to renovate an existing non-conforming structure with an increase in height at 80 Northern Boulevard in Plum Island. They approved the special permit and finding to raise an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and to construct a new elevated single-family dwelling with an increase in height at 60 Radway, Plum Island and directed staff to draft the decision. And lastly, they voted to recommend to the Select Board that Associate Member Jack Kelly be appointed a full voting member to fill a vacancy from the resignation of Elaine Baker. And that's all I have for the CBA. Conservation?
Sure. Conservation met last night. There are a couple of RDAs that were approved, public hearings with regards to our concerns. One of 140 Main Street was continued again. And then there was administrative reports and there was a special permit application review discussion for one Marsh Lane and it was directed back to administration to do some more legwork and come back to the commission.
Thank you, Pete. And MVP C, Martha?
A couple of things. The Commissioners' meeting, last one was held on October 20th and that was pretty much general business, no, no special presentations. And then the planners' meeting, monthly planners' meeting was held on the 27th and that was the kickoff meeting for the update of our housing production plan. So the work plan is being worked out for that and the schedule and I will keep you all posted on that.
Very good. Thank you, Martha. Next on the agenda is the October 2022 financial report, which I will read. Payroll and invoices authorized. Payroll warrants the Planning Director PR 23-08 for the period ending 10/8/22, PR 23-09 for pay period ending 10/22/22. For Planning Board expenses, we have the Verizon Wireless Planning Board iPad, 10/21/2022. And under escrow accounts, we have no business. So moving on. Next item on the agenda is the special permit modification application for 140 R Main Street map, R 41 Lot 42, requesting modification of the special permit granted to Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. on May 16th, 2018 to allow construction of a utility access road, including a bridge in the location of an existing cart path. The applicant, Julie Energy Owner Karen Euseir Thiel and Kavy Enyser, successive trustees of the Ruth Euseir Trust, 138 Main Street, Byfield, Mass. 01922. This hearing was continued from October 19th, 2022 till tonight without discussion at the applicant's request. And I'm informed that Rob Rosin, on behalf of the applicant, has requested that the public hearing be further continued to our November 16th, 2022 meeting to provide additional time to address peer review comments from Joe Sowetka and the Fire Department comments. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
It's actually not quite 7:15 yet, so I wonder.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
About two minutes to go, so.
Do you mean I have to read that all over again in a couple of minutes?
I don't, I don't know.
Well, I got ahead of you, Martha. You're absolutely right. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. You want to talk about the Governors Academy?
Sure. Sure. That should take the two minutes.
So the, yeah, the Governors Academy French Student Center renovations release the remaining escrow funds being held for peer review. So we voted on April 20th, 2022 to approve the as-built plan and to deem the work to be in compliance with the requirements and conditions of the site plan approval decision for the French Student Center renovation. The final invoice for peer review was received from Joe Sowetka and paid. No other expenses related to the project are expected. We're holding a total of $135.56 as of September 30th and plus there might be some additional interest approved for the month of October. So if everything deems in order and the board has no questions, any questions? No, I entertain a motion to release the remaining funds in the escrow account for this project, totaling $135.56 as of 9/30/2022, plus any additional interest accrued for the month of October. Thank you, Woody. Is there a second?
Second.
Leslie, any discussion? All right then. All those in favor of the motion. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yeah. Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mary, you still with us? You're in accord? I'll take that as a yes. I vote yes as well, so it passes unanimously. And it's 7:14, so.
That's well, just administratively on that. I will coordinate with the Treasurer to see if there's any additional accrued interest and then I will write a memo to the, to the Treasurer with the board's vote and we'll get that.
Okay. Thank you, Martha. And still 7:14.
Almost there.
Almost. Almost. I've just got, it's 7:15. Okay. So let's start again. Special permit modification application, 140 R Main Street map. This is public hearing continuance, I'm sorry. For the special permit modification application, 140 R Main Street map, R 41 Lot 42, requesting modification of the special permit granted to Borrego, Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. on May 16th, 2018 to allow construction of a utility access road, including a bridge in the location of an existing cart path. The applicant, Julie Energy, the owner Karen Euseir Thiel and Kavy Enyser, successive trustees of the Ruth Euseir Trust, 138 Main Street, Byfield, Mass. 01922. And this hearing was continued at our October 19th, 2022 meeting without discussion to tonight's meeting and that was at the applicant's request. And we have a further request from Rob Rosin on behalf of the applicant that the public hearing, tonight's public hearing be continued to November 16th, 2022 to provide additional time to address peer review comments from Joe Sowetka and Fire Department comments. So is there any, anyone like to discuss this? Any comments? That said, our hearing done, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the special permit application, modification application to November 16th, 2022 at 7:15 PM via Zoom.
No mood.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Pete. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Pete, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so it passes unanimously. Under old business, we have none. On the new business, we've already addressed the release of the escrow funds for Governors Academy. So the next item on the agenda is the One Marsh Meadow, Marsh Meadow Special Permit Application. And this is a bit unusual, at least it's the first one I've seen in my experience on the board.
So, excuse me, Larry?
Yes.
I think before this discussion begins, I'm going to recuse myself of this discussion. I am a direct abutter to lot number one, although this discussion is about lot number six. I just don't want to have any potential conflicts or misunderstandings.
Okay. Thank you, Pete. Appreciate that. So Mary, unfortunately, not unfortunately, but I can't appoint you to vote in Pete's place because this is not a four-fifths majority vote. So there'll be four voting members and anything would, any motions would require a simple majority to pass. So this is the One Marsh Meadow Special Permit Application. The applicant is Damon Jespersen. It was referred to us by the Select Board for Review per zoning bylaw, Section 9711C1. Mr. Jespersen has applied to the Select Board for an indoor and outdoor recreation areas and facilities special permit in the RA zoning district. The, so the, the Select Board, as Leslie mentioned earlier, has continued this public hearing until November 17th at 7:00 PM at the Town Office Building. So I just want to emphasize that the Select Board is the special permit granting authority in this case. The Planning Board is not sitting as the special permit granting authority on this matter. So tonight is not a public hearing requiring public input. Per Section 9711C1 of our zoning bylaw, the Select Board is required to refer the application to the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Board of Health for their recommendations. This was submitted to us on October 26th and we have 35 days to respond, which gives us a deadline of November 30th. Failure to respond is deemed a lack of opposition to the petition. And I'll note, as Pete mentioned earlier, this was on the Conservation Commission's agenda last night. So our discussions should focus on recommendations the board might wish to make on this application. Now, I know this is probably all new to us. We only, we only got the material just last week and I don't know if you've all had an opportunity to review it in any depth, but what I'd like to do is turn it over to Martha at this point to at least give us an overview of the project and where we're at, then go to the board members for any discussion and about how we might want to proceed and when we might want to proceed. So Martha, if you could take it?
Certainly. First question, I guess, to all the board members is whether it would be helpful for me to pull up on the screen either the site plan or the subdivision plan so everybody can kind of see all the parcels and how they're related to each other or the plans that were submitted with the application or an aerial view. So I could do any or all of those where I can just start making a few. I've noted a few things in my review. May I?
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. When the original subdivision was requested, was there any waivers that they had put in to, for future, for using it as a recreational, commercial type of property? Or was it to just remain as a subdivision for residential purposes only?
As I understand it, Leslie, there was, and Martha, please correct me if I misspeak in any way. There was no particular restriction on the barn, which is the focus of this, of this application. As far as I know, there was no prohibition against, well, I'm sorry, let me step back. There is a, an architectural restriction on the barn. Okay. There is no use restriction on the barn. And both the building commissioner and town council has reviewed it and they have both opined that modification of the, of the OSRD that was, that was previously, previously permitted is not required. Now, perhaps, you know, during the course of the discussions during the, you know, the, the Planning Board hearing, maybe that, they might take a different view of it. I don't know. But right now, that's the best evidence we have. You know, the best information we have. In, in any event, it wouldn't be this board's, under this board's authority to order any sort of modifications to the OSRD. That would actually have to come from the building inspector as the, as the chief zoning enforcement officer of the town.
Follow-up question?
Sure.
When the original decision was made, can you, can anybody explain to the public the difference between commercial and recreational as far as what actually goes on, on the property itself?
Well, it's a good question and Martha, again, I'll invite you to jump in here. I think one of the, the first issue that the Select Board will likely take up next Monday night is whether or not this proposed activity qualifies as recreational. So it's an interesting question. I don't want to, I don't want to hazard a guess on how they might, how they might do that or what even. It's a complicated, it's a complicated question. And again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to hazard.
Yeah, I, myself, I would like to see the clarification between the two. You know, just thinking about sports areas like the Manta Field, it is recreational, so. But there are a lot of differences between the two properties. And it's not commercial, so they just host sporting events. They've declined on any other kind of event. So I guess, you know, that's my question. What is the, the, the big difference between recreational and commercial? Because recreation can be commercial.
Yeah. No, your point is well taken. I, I think we'll maybe get an answer Monday night.
Okay.
Larry, if I may?
Yes.
To answer Martha's question or to put, put on Martha's question, whatever plan that you'd like to put up that would be most helpful for the public and for us, that would be.
Yeah, I think so. Did you get that, Martha?
I did. I did. So maybe what I'll do is pull up the, the original subdivision plan, which shows the entire property that, that was part of the subdivision, excuse me. And then if it's helpful, I can bring up the plans that were submitted with the application and my, my comments, the comments that I have so far and review and really go to the information that Attorney Deshane provided as supplemental information because that's really what the Select Board will be focusing on now and, and the plans. So. So just to get everybody oriented. Are you able to see that?
I can. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to see if I, I guess I can. Over on the left-hand side is Orchard Street. I don't know if you can see my little cursor here.
Yep.
And so Marsh Meadow Lane comes in off of Orchard Street. Lot six, which is actually One Marsh Meadow and that is the, the primary subject of this application is right here. So there's an existing farmhouse and here's the existing barn, which is the, the barn in question. The footprint looks a little bit different now because there were two, two additions to that barn, which were in very bad shape and they've been removed. So, and that did go through process. They were permitted to remove those. That was in the original building restriction as a possibility. So the barn is basically just this rectangle here. This is Even Stride, this big horse barn and horse riding rings. This is the open space back here and the rest of them are residential lots. So there's Lot one, Lot two, Lot three, and Lot four, and those are all residential lots. So I'll take that down.
And Martha, before you do, the conservation restriction is to the entire open space. Is that right?
It's on the open space parcel. Yes. And then two plans were submitted with the application. This again is Orchard Street over on the left-hand side and this was intended to indicate where parking would be proposed. So again, here's One Marsh Meadow with the existing house and the barn. No parking up to about the barn and parking along the street is proposed in Lot one. Some behind the building for staff and handicap parking. And then indication of parking along both sides of Marsh Meadow Lane. Some additional parking in the field, possibly at Even Stride. And then no parking at the cul-de-sac and down the, down the common driveway, which serves for the residences.
And Martha, I think at this point, we, again, correct me if I'm wrong. We don't know if there's any regrading proposed or anything like that for the parking, do we?
No, we don't. And that's actually one of the things that I, I put in, in, I have as a, as a potential comment to send on to the Select Board. So it's been indicated that no, no, no construction and no improvements are anticipated for this. So I think that's one thing that could use some clarification.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 that's fine. So I can also pull up an aerial if that's helpful or I can go through the initial comments that I have. And just as a, as a note, the, the information that we have right now that's been provided to us is really, you know, relatively high level. So it may be appropriate as it goes through the process to get some more specific information and at that point, or comment and review might be possible.
Yep.
So shall I keep this up or shall I? Go through the comments that I've got so far on? go through the comments that I've got so far on this?
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question.
Sure.
Is the road wide enough for parking on both sides to allow emergency vehicles to get down to and back up front at the same time?
I understand that, that the packet that was submitted to the select board includes a letter from both fire and police saying that they were okay with it. One, one of the things that I think Martha has sort of alluded to that is this plan does not have the, the level of detail that we would normally require to, you know, to make any sort of an informed decision. Like, for example, if this were a site plan review, I don't think that we would accept this plan as sufficient. And I think that's one of the things that, again, I don't mean to speak to you, Martha, but I think that's one of the things that she was alluding to that, that we need to, you know, bring to the select board's attention. So the answer is, yeah, the, the, the short answer is there is information to suggest that that it is adequate, but again, the, the plan is.
Is it displayed on any of these maps?
I'm sorry, is what displayed?
Is, is the, the width of the road and the parking, where they say they can park on either side, is it act, is it displayed accurately?
I don't know. You know, I don't know who did the, who, who did this plan. And I'm not even sure if there's a scale on it anywhere. I, I do believe that the plan, that the road as originally constructed was constructed to subdivision standards, I believe. Can you help me with any, with that question, Martha?
Yeah, my recollection, I wasn't involved in this at the time. It was, it was before my time, but my recollection is that at least the, the roadway itself, I'm not 100% sure about the turnaround, but the roadway itself was built to our subdivision specs.
But as, as to Leslie's question about the width of the road, is that shown anywhere on this plan?
Let me see if I can zoom in. I don't know that it is on this plan.
And I don't think we have an engineer stamp on this anywhere, do we?
There is an engineer stamp. This was basically, this plan was pulled from the original submittal for the subdivision. And the scale on it is, I think, one, one inch equals 40 feet is the scale.
But I'm, I'm looking to see if there's anywhere that where the actual width of the road is, is shown, because you need a, you know, a full-size plan and a ruler.
Right, I, I actually do have a full-size plan here, and I do have my scale. So what we would really need is the as-built plan, and excuse me for going off the screen here. So the road is scaling at 22 feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that answer your question, Leslie?
Leslie, you're muted. There you go.
Yep. One more question. If the the submittal is for one Marsh Meadow, what is the reason for asking for usage of another part of the OSRD for parking situation? If it, if they're looking just to use one piece of the property?
Well, that's, that's a very legitimate question that I, I think the special permit granting authority will have to come to, come to grips with. That being the, the select board. You know, again, I want to emphasize that it's not our function here to, to approve or disapprove this plan. But simply to offer any hopefully constructive suggestions we have to the select board.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to help out, you know, anybody that's watching, just to gather some public information. So anybody that's attending the select board hearing can better understand, you know, what's going on with it.
Yeah, no, that's, I think your questions are very on point.
And yet, the, one of the reasons why I did ask about like the size of the road is, you know, they, that the unfortunate catastrophe or tragedy they had down there with the, the horse barn and the emergency vehicles having to get in was very restrained. And I would hate to see anybody that was in that vicinity not be able to evacuate when they needed to.
I'm not familiar with the event you're referring to, but. But so there was an issue down there at some point?
And there was. It was. I can't remember the exact time point, but it was. That was, it was, the barn caught, caught fire, and there was a lot of tragedy as far as the horses inside. And a lot of it had to do with, you know, not being able to get down there and do the job the way that they had to because of, you know, the, it was a farm, it was more of a farm. So, you know, it wasn't set up as a commercial property. It was set up as an agricultural property.
Was that before the subdivision was done, do you know?
Uh, yeah, it was, yeah. What was it? Mary Meadows or? Even Stride.
Even Stride, right, right.
Okay.
But the, you know, it, it still has the debt going on down there, so, you know, just just for safety purposes.
No, no, that's certainly something hopefully that, you know, will be considered as this progresses. Martha, is there anything else you, you want to add?
Not as far as the plans are concerned, so I can offer a few observations or comments that, that I have going through these, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, please do.
Shall I stop sharing? Yeah.
I think so. Oh, you want to keep it up, Woody?
No, no, that's, that's fine. I just was wanted Martha to use the plan that she thought would be best with the comments. Nope, that's fine.
So what I did was I, I did look at these plans and I went through the letter that attorney to Shane provided. And most of my comments are sort of directly related to some of the comments that he made. But first, and we've already touched on this, the fact that the application was for one Marsh Meadow, but the proposal really, really appears to be using the, the, potentially using the entire subdivision property. So one thought I had would be to recommend to the select board that they really get clarification on, on that. As well as, as more clarification on the use, sort of a business plan, I suppose, in terms of numbers of people, numbers of cars and that kind of stuff. There's just, as, as we've already discussed, there's not a lot of information there right now. In Mr. DeShane's letter, item E, he stated that no other permits other than possibly a board of health permit for portable bathrooms are expected to be needed. But I think one suggestion to the select board might be to just consult with the building commissioner for a determination on, you know, whether there are any other permits that would be required for the proposed use. And it might, if, if they are going to allow occasional large events, it might also, they might consider as a condition of approval requiring sign-off from fire and police and health for every event, just to make sure that, that public safety and public health are being appropriately attended to. Item F of his letter, Mr. DeShane's letter states that no new construction is proposed. And that goes back to the question that was asked earlier. It might suggest that the applicant, that the select board requests the applicant clarify whether any exterior improvements associated with their proposed uses, such as resurfacing or regrading designated parking areas or installation of exterior lighting for nighttime activities is needed. If, if those kinds of improvements are going to be done, then that information should be provided. And that would include a site plan that would show, you know, show those grading changes as well as, I think, showing the parking more specifically. And as Larry noted earlier, there is a building restriction on the farmstead at one Marsh Meadow, which has provisions regarding any exterior improvements that are done, recognized as historic premises. And so any, any improvements that are done need to be done in accordance with the building restriction and to protect the integrity of the historic premises. There seems to be a discrepancy. Item G of Mr. DeShane's letter states that there will be no parking allowed on the public ways, including Orchard Street and Marsh Meadow Lane, as we saw in the plans that we just looked at. The, the current proposal shows parking on a Marsh Meadow, so, so clarification of that will need to be made. And exact location of parking should be shown on a site plan drawn to scale, as we've discussed earlier. And item L of Mr. DeShane's letter states that there are no proposed changes to the barn structure or to the topography or surfaces of the property. And as already noted, we would suggest that the select board request that the applicant confirm whether any exterior improvements are contemplated or not. And if so, they should be shown and there should be, if, if there's going to be any increased stormwater runoff, that should also, the plan should indicate how that will be managed. So that's what I have so far.
Well, thank you, Martha.
Thanks, Martha.
A lot to think about. George, any questions?
Yes, I do have a question on the parking spaces. The attorney in his letter said to be no changes to the ground. Will it be any requests for paving on those spaces? Or do we know?
Well, that's a question.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's, we don't know, George, I think is, is the short answer.
Well, there's nothing that we received that would indicate it. So, you know, if it's going to be no change to the ground, that would say the ground will stay as it is without paving. But if there is going to be paving, then he has to correct his letter.
Yeah. Gravel or whatever, I mean, anything that, you know, potentially could affect stormwater runoff, of course, would be important to know.
Right.
Thank you, George. Anything else?
No, thanks.
I'm sorry.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. If there's not going to be any permitted parking on Orchard Street, will the venue be required to have police detail out there to ensure that?
That's going to be, that's going to be.
Select board, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, police fire inspection prior to the event and EMTs available on site during an event? These are, these are just questions that I have that maybe you could submit to the select board. I, 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 I get this information because I do a lot of outdoor shows. And these are the things that are required in order to do an outdoor facility type of show or an indoor facility show, that you have to have these requirements in place in duly respect, inspected prior to, during, and after these events take place. And it's always been, there has to be emergency first responders on site in the event that there's something odd happens.
Yeah, well, hopefully, you know, they would consider all of those issues during their deliberations. Once again, that, you know, their initial question is going to be whether or not this is recreational. And if the answer is no, then that, you know, we stop there, I, I would expect if the answer is yes, then they'll have to go into all of these.
And that's where the clear definition between commercial and recreational lies.
Right, and town council will be in attendance Monday night, I understand. So, anything else, Leslie?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Woody?
Yeah, I think in response to the question about posting, I believe that Mr. DeShane's letter does say that Orchard Street and Marsh Meadow would be posted, no parking.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
At least.
At least that's what's been put forward right now, but obviously that needs to be further discussed.
Okay.
And clarified.
Woody, do you have anything?
No, I think Martha's covered most of the questions as far as information that needs to be provided by the applicant and things that need to be looked at by the select board, because it is a special permit granted by the select.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Mary, would anything you'd like to, any questions or anything you'd like to add?
No, Larry, thank you.
So Martha, what, what do you think we should go from here? I am. It, it, we're, we're not under any obligation to make a response before Monday night. That said, it might be helpful to the select board if, you know, if, if we at least got something preliminary out, not necessarily the final report or final recommendation. So I, I think, as I can see it, we have several options. One is, would be to authorize, the board to authorize Martha and myself to draft a letter to the select board with preliminary comments based on the materials received to date and tonight's discussion. That's something that we wouldn't have an opportunity to review as a board before it went out, because if we were trying to meet their Monday night deadline, well, not deadline, no one's imposed a deadline on us Monday night, but it, it might be helpful to the select board. The other option might be to to authorize, again, Martha, to draft a letter for the board to review at our November 16th meeting before it went out. And the third option, and this is something that, that, that town council suggested was appropriate, would be to simply direct that the response be handled at the staff level, which is just another way of saying, let Martha do it. And, you know, the last option, the, the only other option I can come up with is to do nothing. And once the November 30th deadline passes, then we would, I don't recommend that, but once November 30th passes, we would deem to have no objection. My own feeling is that the first option is probably the best. At least get something out, make it clear that it's not a final report or final recommendation, but just to, you know, to raise the concerns that we've identified so far. And depending on how this progresses, I'm sure there may be other concerns that will identify as well. Woody, did you have something?
I, I agree with you there, Larry. I think that Martha's laid, laid out the few concerning questions that she has, and she would be best to put something like that together for the Monday night if she could. And it would just be as, like you said, a, you know, a preliminary suggestions? Is that what you said, Larry?
Yeah, right. I mean, we, we would want to make it clear that this is not a final report or recommendation. I, I mean, we, we really need more information to make an informed decision. And, and.
Yes, I agree with you. Yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, I think we want to make, yeah. I think we want to make that clear to the Board. George, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree, Larry, because I don't think this is any problem at all to pass on to the Selectmen any of the items that we, Martha and the Board has had about the development of, or use of the barn. That should be very helpful to them, and also that the plan is not up to snuff in terms of what we would probably want as one free subdivision plan, or even approval-not-required plan.
Right.
There is an element missing.
I'm sorry.
There's some elements missing.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to keep talking over you. Leslie, your thoughts?
My only thought is that before we move forward, we decide if we leave this burden on the shoulders of Martha along and, or we decide as a board tonight that she could represent us, so to make a motion on that.
Yeah, no, I would, and Martha and I have talked about this, I think our recommendation would be that, that we, Martha and I collaborate on the letter. She's already done ninety percent of the work anyway, but be that as it may, and I would sign it as Chair and send it to the Board. I think it, you know, that might be appropriate, if you're all comfortable with that.
Send it as Chair and representation of the entire Board.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. The only, yeah, the only downside is you wouldn't have an opportunity to review it before it went out. Because we wouldn't even have time to call a special meeting to do that.
If you want to put that in the form of a motion, I still move that.
All right. So just to clarify, would you move to authorize the Chair and Planner to draft a letter to the Select Board with preliminary comments based on materials received to date in tonight's discussion?
Yes, yep, sounds good.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, George. Any discussion on the motion?
Will any of us have an opportunity to? I know you just said there will be no review, but before Monday's meeting, will we have some kind of initial report on exactly what they're going to be receiving?
I, Martha, I guess there's no, no reason that, once the letter was completed, that we couldn't copy the Board members, is it?
No, I don't think there's any reason. We couldn't copy the Board members. We just wouldn't be able to receive any comment on it.
Right.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we have a motion. George, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Leslie, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
Woody, how do you vote on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So it passes four in favor with, of course, one recusal. Thank you. We'll kind of be interested to see what happens Monday night. It's an interesting situation. Let's see. Well, that brings us then to the Planning Director's Report in the agenda. Martha, do you have anything?
I do. I have a few things to report on and also a couple of communications to pass on to you. So regarding current projects, three Newburyport Turnpike, if you recall that, that's the one up at the traffic circle with mixed-use building. They are actually gearing up to start construction. So I've communicated with their engineer and we will be scheduling a pre-construction conference. I've asked for a schedule, haven't received it yet, so I'm not quite sure exactly. We don't have an exact start date or what they anticipate for a construction period, but that is moving forward. K and R Construction have been moving forward sort of bit by bit with, not only with the 131 Newburyport Turnpike, the self-storage work that they're doing, but also starting work on eighty-four Boston Road. So we did go out there on the, I think it was the twentieth to, to see what was going on. Ryan was in the process of doing some, moving some materials out of the way. There's turns out there are a lot of things that had been stored on that property by the previous owner, including tires and things like that, that he was clearing out in order to put down the construction, the erosion controls. So that is moving forward. We've gotten a schedule on that, but I think they're, they're going to be kind of going back and forth between the two sites, and so that will be kind of a fluid situation. I have attended two more webinars hosted by Mass Housing Partnership regarding the MBTA communities. One was on density, and today's webinar was on siting in adjacent communities. It's not quite the same situation as ours, but because we're in adjacent small town. But as such, we're not required to put it within half a mile of the train station, so we've got more flexibility. And they were just talking about tools that we can use and sort of metrics we can use to decide what appropriate locations in town would be for our multifamily district. I'll be going to the Great Marsh Symposium tomorrow, at which they're going to be talking about roads going through marsh areas. And then as far as the communications are concerned, there was a public hearing held by the tree warden last Monday, the thirty-first, regarding a number of trees throughout town within the right-of-way that need to come out or be seriously trimmed. And a letter has been submitted objecting to the proposed removal of trees on Newman Road and requesting that the town consult with the abutting owner, which is the trustees of reservations and other interested parties. I haven't gotten any feedback from the tree warden on how that will be handled. I think when a objection is raised to removal of trees, it goes to the Select Board. And this letter was submitted to the Select Board and the Planning Board by David Powell. He was actually a former Planning Board member. The other thing that we received is a public hearing notice from Georgetown for something that's going before the Zoning Board of Appeals. I want to get clarification on it, but it appears that the developer who is doing the Parish Commons project down on Larkin Road has acquired or is acquiring another parcel that's adjacent to it. It doesn't have a street address, but it's identified as being Onshoot Road. And they need to go before the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals for a variance to use this for residential purposes. So I don't know if the intention is to add it to the development that's already been done there or treat it as a separate parcel. It doesn't have any frontage right now. I think that portion of Shoot Road is basically a paper street. So I'm going to contact the Georgetown Planner to see if I can get some more information about that. The hearing itself is going to be held on December sixth, and I'll let you all know what I find out. It's something that we may just want to keep an eye on.
Martha, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Shoot Road is a two-town street. So half of it is in Byfield and half of it is in Georgetown. So which side of the street are they?
So it's on, it's on the Georgetown side. The parcel is in Georgetown.
Okay.
And it directly abuts the development that John Collentony has done.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You're welcome.
Hey, Larry, if I could?
Sure.
Hey, Martha, from that sidewalk that we did on the twentieth, we kind of saw that the road was kind of getting beat up with large equipment going on and off.
Right.
And so I just want to, you know, go on the record that nicely newly paved road is probably going to be compromised along those those aspects of where the machinery is coming on and off. I don't know what mediation could be done or if anything can be done. But it's a shame when a newly paved road gets destroyed by hard, you know, heavy equipment, all that stuff in and out.
Is that Boston Road you're talking about, Pete?
Yes.
Right. And I did send an email that afternoon to Kevin Whitney, just alerting him to that fact, along with photograph. And he said that he would get right on it. We've actually had a similar issue at sixty-eight Green Street. There was dirt being tracked off onto, onto Green Street itself. So in both cases, I requested that they refresh the construction entrance and make sure they clean the tires on the construction vehicles off before they go out onto the road and also sweep the road at the end of the day. But at eighty-four Boston Road, it is clear part of the pavement right at the edge is breaking down.
I have, I glitched out on what Peter was saying. So before you brought up Boston Road, where were you talking about, Peter?
We were talking about, yeah, Boston Road. We did a sidewalk on, I think, the twentieth. And we could see some fatigue already beginning of the edge of the newly paved road. So just wanted to, you know, put it out there, you know, that we've identified it, we've notified it, we've noticed it. Martha's sent out an email. I just want to let the Board know. You know, going forward, we just, we have to be cognizant of these sort of things. And the remediation that they'll be doing when they're done to reestablish the the buffer and all that sort of stuff. We just have to keep a handle on.
Right. Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. I forgot.
Okay, thank you. I got you. Everything froze for a sec, so I didn't hear what you said to you. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else, Martha?
No, that's it.
Okay. So the last item on the agenda are the meeting minutes from October nineteenth of this year, and those are not ready, so I guess we'll hold those for the next time.
Yeah.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda. So unless anyone has anything else they'd like to bring up, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I guess you don't want to stay here. I think I heard Leslie first. Thank you, Leslie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. No, just any discussion? I'm going to think, no. And Pete, you can vote on this. So how do you vote?
Yes, please.
George, how do you vote? George?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes, and good night, everyone.
Good night, Leslie.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, and good night, Mary. And good night all. Thank you very much for all your thoughtful comments tonight.
Good night, everybody.